Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Marshand. Nichols.
Here.
Blad.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for an invocation, which will be offered by Tony Cycle representing Portnoy Sangia?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I invite you to close your eyes as we bring our attention to our breath and body, where we are at this present moment. We give thanks for this precious body and precious human life, and we reaffirm our desire to serve our fellow beings. May everyone in this meeting continue to hold this strong intention to serve others, to be a bridge for those with rivers to cross, to be a ship for those with oceans to cross, a shelter for the homeless, a safe refuge for those in danger, and a hand of hope for those who feel no hope. May our health continue to support our efforts, and may we welcome adversity as readily as success. May all of us be free from suffering, may we live with ease of being. May all those suffering and worn oppression find peace, may those grieving find solace, and those who are ill have compassionate treatment and help. May all beings without exception be free from enmity, danger, hatred, and despair. May all beings be free from suffering and the causes of suffering. May our efforts here today benefit all of the citizens of Pocatello. As we close this meditation, I would like to quote the Buddha. The dedication of a virtuous act for all beings is like adding a drop of water to the ocean. As long as the ocean exists, the drop of water exists. So too, a small positive action, when directed toward the benefit of all beings, will endure forever. I invite you to open your eyes now, so that you can begin your work on behalf of the people of Pocatello. Mayor Blad and members of council, thank you for your continued gift of service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. I always love seeing Tony here, so thank you, Tony. Before I jump into Agenda Item Number Three, if you are here for Agenda Item Fifteen, it has been pulled from the agenda, and so it will be on a future Agenda Item. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A, material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of April 1 through 15, 2023. B, Pocatello Development Authority reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jeff Huff, representing Bennett County, David Villarreal, and Greg Gunter to continue serving as members of the Pocatello Development Authority. All terms will begin May 1, 2023, and will expire May 1, 2027. C, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Hunter Rodriguez to serve as a member of the CDBG advisory committee, replacing Joan Evans, or Joe Evans, who resigned. Hunter's term will begin April 21, 2023, and will expire January 1, 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, Items A through C.
Second.
Second.
Wow, Cheatham.
Now that he's here, he's fast.
You know what? I have to tell you. It's, you know, you're right. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, and it is nice. I should have mentioned that before we got going, it is nice to have Council President Cheatham back in with us today, and apparently you legislators just are dying for more meetings because we've got a representative furnished with us as well, so we're pretty excited to have two of our two good legislators.
And Nate.
And Nate. Oh, yeah, Nate, you're over there. I talked to you, too. Three legislators in our meeting, and that's a great, great meeting.
They're going through withdrawal.
I think they are. They must be. I don't understand it personally, but they must be. So, thank you, by the way, for being here. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, Proclamations. We have three proclamations. One will be Arbor Day. It will be read by Council President Rick Cheatham. Earth Day will be read by Council Member Brent Nichols, and Civitan Awareness Month will be read by Council Member Mansfield. Rick?
Whereas, in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, the holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed, Brian C. Blad, Mayor, City of Pocatello.
Somebody's got it. Who's getting the Arbor Day?
Gary Bates?
Gary Bates?
Gary Bates.
He's not here.
We'll give it to him. With that then, Brent?
All right. Whereas, a sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and a robust economy. And whereas, human activities around the world are causing climate change that threatens humans' health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life. And whereas, the knowledge of ways to live in harmony with our environment and methods and technologies to reduce our carbon footprint already exist. And whereas, local communities can do much more to slow down the effects of climate change and contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy use, transportation, personal habits, and consumption. And whereas, there are sound economic, environmental, and social reasons for local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices. And whereas, the environmental realities of our time require humans to make a dramatic shift in our relationship to the earth. And whereas, Earth Day is a time to celebrate the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our natural resources. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 23, to be Earth Day. In Pocatello, and I encourage our residents, businesses, and institutions to make a commitment to undertake programs and projects that enhance our community's natural environment by reducing the city's carbon footprint and help build a sustainable community. Signed, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello.
And Jim Flynn.
For Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turn around. Your dad wants a picture. If you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to. Either one of you.
We just encourage everybody to come to the Environmental Fair on Saturday, 11 to 3:00, at Caldwell Park.
Thank you.
Whereas, Civitan International was founded in 1917 in Birmingham, Alabama. And whereas, there was a corps of volunteers of over 40,000 men and women, whose mission is to build good citizenship by providing a volunteer organization of 1,300 clubs in 34 nations, dedicated to serving individual and community needs, with an emphasis on helping people with developmental disabilities. And whereas, Civitan has contributed millions of dollars to help people with mental and physical developmental disabilities. And whereas, Civitan promotes good citizenship and challenges all to think of citizenship as a privilege and a responsibility. And whereas, Civitan is recognized for its support of research and treatment of MR/DID through funding of Civitan International Research Center. And whereas, here in our area, Bannock Civitan Club, Junior Civitan Club, and Friends Civitan Club of Pocatello do good work in our community, now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 to be Civitan Awareness Month in Pocatello, Idaho, and encourage the residents of Pocatello to actively support and take pride in the worthwhile efforts of this international service organization and in the work of Civitans in our community.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Got a professional photographer.
Get me angry.
That's right.
Well, behalf of Bannock Civitan, see, told you, it's all coming out backwards. Mm-hmm. We just wanted to say we appreciate your support, as you have always done for Bannock Civitan. We are moving into our 45th year in the community.
Name?
So, oh, my name is Noko Bush, and I am the current president of Bannock Civitan. So, we, again, thank you for all of your support. We're excited to have a new venue this summer for Revive at Five, starting in June. So, thank you for your support with that as well, and everything you do downtown. But, anyway, thanks again, and anytime you want to come to a meeting, every Wednesday at the Elks Lodge at noon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On May 4, 5:30 PM will be a clarification meeting. May 4, 6 PM will be a regular city council meeting. May 11, 9 AM is a city council work session. Other events, the annual spring cleanup at Mountain View and Reston Cemeteries continues. Crews are removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations and flowers they have placed on cemetery spaces if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by cemetery staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. April 21, the city will host its annual hiring fair from 2 PM to 7 PM at the Public Works Annex located at 2405 Garrettway. April 22, the Portnoy Valley Environmental Fair will be held at Caldwell Park from 11 AM to 3 PM. Citizens using any PRT fixed route or special services during the environmental fair hours may ride to and from Caldwell Park for free. April 22, Medicine Takeback Day will coincide with the Environmental Fair. Law enforcement personnel will be on hand to take back and safely dispose of unwanted medicines to keep them out of our water supply. Half-priced dog and puppy adoptions have been extended through April 22 at the animal shelter. April 25, residents are invited to an open house to provide input regarding how Pocatello's downtown historic district design standards can encourage economic growth while protecting Pocatello's distinctive character. There will be two sessions to choose from, the first between noon and 1 PM, and the second between 4 and 6 PM at Dude's Public Market at 240 South Main Street. May 6, the 2023 Portnoy Valley Fund Run Series begins with the Law Day Run. For more information or to sign up, visit the city's website or contact Parks and Recreation. Citywide cleanup at Caldwell Park from 8 AM to 12 PM. There will be a pancake breakfast, and you'll meet at Caldwell Park, and you'll go out from there. Zoo Idaho is now open seven days a week. With dog licenses expiring June 1, the city is offering half-priced dog licensing throughout the month of May. Licenses may be purchased at City Hall or at the animal shelter. Compost happens. The yard waste only composting program has begun and will continue through the last week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as your regular collection day. Sandbags are available to residents at the Public Works Annex located at 2405 Garrettway. Residents may fill and take up to eight bags per household. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Six. Agenda Item Six is a public hearing, Zone Map Amendment Western Skies. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a zone map amendment application requested by Brandon Ratliff of Land Quest LLC rezoning 3.58 acres, more or less, into a 15.69 acre parcel, more or less, from residential medium-density multifamily RMM to residential high-density RH. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the application with conditions on March 22, 2023. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any expertise communication in regards to this agenda item? Okay. Then with that, I would ask the applicant to please come up and...
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am Sean O'Brien with RMES, representing Mr. Ratliff of Land Quest Development. You can find our office at 600 East Oak Street here in Pocatello. Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss this very exciting zone change request. Start off with a little background. Back in 2022, we requested annexation of these lands with the two zoning designations of RMS and RMM. The request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission July 13, 2022, and by the city council on August 4, 2022, and it was approved as ordinance number 3109, recorded October 12, 2022, as instrument number 22216407. We had some in-house discussions on whether or not to include this RMM zoning designation as part of that original annexation request. We wanted to analyze the situation further, but we also wanted to make sure that the annexation request made it in and it was approved. So, we determined to proceed with that original annexation request with the two zoning designations of RMS and RMM, and to follow it up with the zone change request at a later date, which is why we're here today. The location of this requested zone change is bordered on the northerly, northeasterly side by the highway system, and effectively removes a portion of the RMM zoning, leaving the boundary of the RMM zoning to the southerly and westerly sides of this zone change request location. The location effectively provides a significant buffer from the RMS zones to the west and south of this requested zone change location. We are simply looking for some creative flexibility as housing needs and market demands evolve. The use table found under City Code 17.03.500 has essentially identical uses for both RMM and RH zoning districts. The dimensional standards table found under City Code 17.03.600 does provide for the creative flexibility in terms of minimum lot size requirements, and some of, but not all, of the setback requirements, among a few other things. So, the permitted uses for residential uses in those two zones, RMM and RH, are essentially identical. The dimensional standards provide a little bit more creative flexibility as we are planning the development of these lands. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for, yes?
So, this change would allow you to have smaller lots, is that right, in higher density?
A little bit smaller lots, a little bit higher density. There's a little bit of some setback differences as well that provide a little bit more creativity in our design as we proceed to develop these lands.
Right. So, do you have a flavor of how many, how much of an increase in density you could have on that 3.58?
I don't have that number on the top of my head. I believe the staff analysis has some numbers to that effect. I think it's about two to three times more dense per acre, per residence.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Sean while he's up? Linda?
Just the, what's it called, the display map, where it shows the outline of the section we're talking about changing, and it shows drawn units on that part, and they look the same as the other part. That would change, right? Those are gonna...
So, good question. The layout that's on this display map was the same layout that we used for the annexation. To save some time and cost, we didn't create a new layout to accommodate this zone change request. I just copied and pasted it into this to kind of give an idea of what may happen in that area. So, it's the same layout as the zone change, or as the annexation was.
I'm just assuming that the outlines of the units themselves will then change from what they look like here. This is just an idea.
It's all preliminary in nature, subject to change. Really, what we're trying to show is the street, how the streets are going to work in that area, how they're going to connect with the neighboring parcels, and give an idea of what the development may look like.
Page 16.
All right. Any other questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you. The staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted, Brandon Ratliff of Land Quest LLC, represented by Sean O'Brien of RMES, has submitted a zoning map amendment application requesting to rezone 3.58 acres, more or less, of the subject parent parcel encompassing 15.69 acres, more or less, from residential medium-density multifamily to residential high-density. The primary difference between the two districts equates to the maximum number of dwelling units per acre. Specifically, RMM is 12 units per acre versus RH, which is 30 units per acre. The same land uses as far as residential are committed. Parcel was located east of Dulston Drive and west, adjacent to the Interstate I-86, southern merger ramp with I-15. Notice was provided to all property owners within 300-foot radius of the external boundaries of the land. Notice was also provided in Idaho State Journal and assigned post on the subject property. No written comments has been received by the public. A utility notice was provided to appropriate entities via email on January 25, 2023. No written comments have been received. Following the public hearing on March 22, 2023, the commission recommends approval of the request with conditions. In consideration of the application, the council may wish to adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings, fact, and recommendation. This concludes my presentation, Mayor and council.
Yeah, council, any questions for staff while he's up? All right, thank you, Matt. Madam Clerk, have you received any correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we will, thank you, ma'am. Then we'll look for any supporting testimony for the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, I don't know. Sean, do you want to say anything else?
Very excited to be here, thank you.
Okay, thank you, then. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item's before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the Zone Map Amendment for the Western Skies, I guess, Agenda Item Number Six.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Council Member Mangum. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven as a public hearing, Planned Unit Development, PUD, Brock Place PUD. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Kent Morris of Morris Construction, represented by Chris Streets of HLE Incorporated, for a planned unit development PUD to develop 4.69 acres, more or less, into 36 town home lots, eight fourplex lots, and combination stormwater and recreation area. The subject parcel is located east of Philbin Road and south of Brock Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the application with conditions on March 22, 2023. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any expertise communication on this agenda item? Okay, then, with that, I would look for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, good evening. Thank you for having me here. Chris Street, HLE Inc., I'm here representing Kent Morris. My address is 800 West Judicial in Blackfoot. I have some larger copies, if you guys would prefer larger copies. I know you guys only get eight and a half by 11, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so, we've been working on this for about a year and a half now. When Mr. Morris approached us about this, one thing he was super concerned with is this sub, or this PUD borders up against, or this parcel borders up against, single-family residential in the Breezy Point subdivisions. What he didn't want to do was put a bunch of fourplexes, which would have been allowed by the zoning, a bunch of fourplexes. He did want some fourplexes in here, but he wanted to kind of have a buffer between the single-family residential and those fourplexes. If you're familiar with the area, Mr. Morris has developed across Brock Drive a fourplex development, and it looks very, very nice. So, and the fourplexes that are proposed to be in this PUD are the identical floor plan as those that are across the street. But what he wanted to do, and was kind of buffer those fourplexes and buffer the single-family residential and those fourplexes, so he brought to us some town home buildings, and these are going to be sold as individual units. They come in a, they're a six-unit building, and there's six buildings, and each of the units is about 700 square feet, has a garage, and it's a double-story unit. So, not exceptionally large, but fits kind of a niche that's needed in the community. The great thing about this, they've got a backyard that's going to be open. It's their own property, but it's going to be maintained by the Homer Association, so not a lot of fences. We've also got a nice walking path around the development, and two recreational, two big recreational areas, one with a basketball court, one that's just going to be an open grass where the kids of the community can come play some flag football, or football, or soccer, or whatever, you know, just on some open grass areas that maybe not be behind the units themselves. We did have some public comment from the neighbors. It was great to have that comment. One of them was, originally, we had the sidewalk, but it ran up against the fence, and good point was brought up, it's hard to maintain that, it's hard to build that, so we bumped that sidewalk so that it was a five-foot buffer. And in doing that, we also, in the landscape plan they have on your second sheet, we also moved our trees so they're in back of, so they're between the sidewalk and the neighbors, again, creating another buffer between the single-family residential and these town house units. One of the other concerns that were brought up was about lights, especially the backlights. We put a, we brought this to developer, he totally agrees, and that's the great thing about this developer, he's not only developing the property, but he's building the units. So, we've got some verbiage in there to keep those backlights so they shine down, and they're not higher than 10 feet above the ground. There's some concern about garbage enclosures that were brought up. Again, we addressed that on the map that you have, the masonry, so they're just not open, so it helps with the wind. As it was brought up in the planning and zoning meeting, Breezy Point is called Breezy Point for a reason, because it's pretty windy out there, it can get pretty windy out there. So, just it helps keep, control the trash from blowing all over the neighborhood. So, yeah, and I think we kind of, we took all the, excuse me, we took all the concerns for the neighbors into consideration, and they were great concerns, and they, you know, when you look at something for a year and a half, you kind of miss some stuff, so it's great to have some fresh comments from the neighbors, so. But if you guys have any questions for me, I could try to answer them.
Council questions, Linda, and then Corey.
Kind of a dumb question, but on this landscape map, these gridded areas in red, are those...
are those
So, those are the, actually, the under, underground stormwater retention.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, most of our stormwater is gonna be retained underground. There is a little bit of a pond between the, uh, in the backyards of the fourplexes, but most of it's gonna be underground and so there's gonna be a lot of grass areas.
Nice, okay.
Corey, Mr. Mayor?
So, we've got Councilmember Mangum and then Council President Cheatham.
So, after speaking with community members or the neighbors in this area, and you went back to the drawing board, redrew some of these things, did you go back to those, uh, neighbors in the
Actually, the, the concerns came up in the planning and zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, we, after the planning and zoning, um, hearing, we went back and we got this back over to staff so that you guys could have a fresh copy with everything that had been adjusted.
Okay.
Thank you. Council President Cheatham?
This stormwater retention underground tanks, how large are those?
Oh, that's a good question. I think there is a, sorry, this is not my world of expertise, right? I know they're large enough that developers, like, man, can we get rid of some of those? Because apparently they're pretty expensive to put in. So, if we look at some of these dimensions here, I could probably guess. So, the front dimension, there's about 160 feet long and, uh, there, uh, it looks like about 20 feet wide on that big, long one up on the north. So, that kind of gives you an idea about how big they are.
What's the depth?
The depth, they're, uh, you know, I'd be, just be guessing, but I believe they bury them at like, I think they bury them at like four or five feet.
But what's the depth of the tank?
The tank itself, I can, I'd just be guessing again. They're, they're gonna be on the design plans and those are, they're actually specked out and they're, they come from the manufacturer. I, I do not remember exactly what they are. So, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Cheatham.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Nichols?
Just to follow up on that, are those just the infiltrators?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not an actual tank.
No, they're, yeah, they're infiltrators.
They're infiltrators.
Yeah, they're like a plastic, almost like you have in
Like a dome, right.
Right, right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Chris, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, staff?
Again, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Matthew Lewis with the City Planning Department. As noted in the agenda, Mr. Kent Morris, um, has, uh, represented by Chris Street of HLE, has submitted an application for a planning and development to develop 4.69 acres more or less into 36 townhome lots, eight fourplex lots, and a combination stormwater, open space, recreation areas, and parking lot. The proposed, uh, PUD is noted, um, is, uh, east of Philbin Road, south of Brock Drive. The subject property is zoned residential, commercial, professional. The townhome portion of the project is designed, and my comments are gonna be high level, the ones that I think are important as far as I know, and the staff report's pretty detailed. So, I'm gonna touch on the high levels, uh, importance of it. The townhome portion of the subject is designed as zero lot line development in groups of six for a total of 36 structures in all. The project is designed to integrate with adjacent residential homes by constructing the townhomes adjacent to single-family homes rather than the fourplexes, which are proposed near the center of the parcel. Additionally, they increased rear setbacks 25 feet or more and planting of trees improves air and space between the subject development and existing subdivisions. A six-foot wide pedestrian walkway, walking path is proposed extending five feet from the rear property line and the townhomes interconnecting the existing sidewalks of Philbin Road and Brock Drive. Common areas would be provided for parking, open space, stormwater retention, with set areas being dedicated and maintained by the homeowners association. Minimum parking requirements are being met for both the townhomes and fourplexes. The APK has requested a waiver as part of the PUD application. Specifically, uh, municipal code requires a six-foot yard, side yard setback shall be maintained at the end units for both the townhomes and the apartment structures abiding the stormwater retention and recreation areas. The commission recommends approval of the waiver. There are two points of ingress and egress to the development, both of off of Brock Drive. Access from Philbin Road will not be provided. A 3,960-square-foot parcel, Lot One, is being dedicated to the city for future expansion of Philbin Road. As part of the PUD, at least 20% of the net area involved in the development shall be left for open space. As such, a minimum of 40,859 square feet shall be dedicated as open space and APK is proposing 42,548 square feet more or less. Notice was provided to all property owners within 300-foot radius of the existing boundaries. Notice was provided in Idaho State Journal. No written testimony has been received. Utility providers and affected, uh, city departments were provided notice on February 8th, 2023. To date, no comments have been received from utility providers and affected, uh, city departments other than the Public Works memo provided with the staff report. Following the public hearing on March 22nd, 2023, the commission recommends approval of the request with the conditions. In consideration of the application and proposed development, the council may wish to adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings, fact, and recommendation as their own. This concludes my presentation, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Council? Councilmember Nichols?
Um, hi, Matt. Could you maybe give us all just a real quick, high-level primer on, uh, what a PUD is and when they're used and what they accomplish?
Yeah, sure. So, the purpose, and, and the PEDs are found in, uh, under Code Section 1702140. The purpose of the PUD is to facilitate a more flexible mixture of uses and developments. They are intended to allow for greater density, to encourage cluster development, um, in open spaces and to integrate in with, uh, surrounding areas. There's criteria under that section, under C, for review. Some of the things that you can, uh, look at would be emphasis of architectural design, obviously more open space than would normally be found in your, in, in your typical subdivision. And it allows for amenities, um, in there. And so, it, you also can allow greater density up to 20%. And so, that's what kind of worked with the developer originally when they came in, into the office and started working with me. The townhomes on, I think it's on the west side of one of the subdivisions actually had a 10-foot setback, which is minimum, um, under code. But I encouraged them to move that, 25 feet, uh, and to allow for that air and space between the existing subdivisions and so forth. And I, I think at this point, with some of those changes and recommendations by the commission and, and the conditions, I, I think this is gonna be a quality project, in my, in my personal opinion.
I got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Mangum?
Matt, you had mentioned that there was a portion of land that was given to the city or for future development. How, what was that?
So, there's a Lot One, it's probably, it's probably difficult to see on, on your, on that small of a... I know I couldn't see it, but it's, uh, there, there's a Lot One, it's right, it's a 10-foot wide sliver that equates to about 3,900 square feet. And it's for the purpose of widening Philbin Road and putting in curb and gutter and sidewalk. And these developments, both on Philbin, at, above Philbin and also Quinn, that's been very common, um, that the, uh, our Public Works Department is required for that, for that expansion.
So, we're gonna, so with this approval, we'll need expansion in that?
It'll be dedicated, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then curb, gutter, sidewalk.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for Matt? Matt, you did say there were no other comment, uh, correspondence. Madam Clerk, were there any correspondence in the?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, man. Then I would look for any testimony, uh, supporting this application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application?
Benjamin Ledford, 420 North Garfield. Didn't actually come to, to speak to this hearing, but I'm familiar with that part of town. And, uh, I think there are development considerations that, that may or may not apply to the approval of this application, but I think are important for council to be thinking about longer term. Specifically, that we need a road plan. In that area, we have so few connecting drives and you have Philbin and Quinn, and, and that's it. And as, you know, we're aware now with the, um, Quinn and Hawthorne intersection, when that intersection is out of use, then, you know, almost like a quarter of the land area of Pocatello doesn't have any connecting streets, because there are so few major connecting streets. It used to be that the primary part of city planning was developing a street plan. Now, we focus more on zoning and on setback requirements and things like that and sort of leave the street planning, apart from maybe county roads or something like that, to a case-by-case basis. And widening roads isn't a long-term solution to that problem because we're all on the same plane at an intersection, and so the cars have to wait and pass each other. And so, you can build larger and larger intersections, but if you go to somewhere like Meridian, you can see that, that doesn't increase convenience, right, over time if there aren't additional connecting roads, if there are alternate routes. And so, on Philbin, you know, we already see with Connor Academy, at certain times of day, you know, when cars are backed up as parents are, um, picking up or dropping off kids, there simply aren't any alternate routes for a lot of the properties and lots along Philbin. They can only turn out on Philbin, traffic may be blocked, um, you know, and there's not another path. And so, um, I'd say this, whether this applies to, you know, in any changes to the current development, uh, leave to your discretion, but I think it would be really helpful for, um, planning to be identifying, like, desired or future rights of way that development can be conforming to so that we're not just doing it on a case-by-case basis, but we're planning for roads to connect to future roads so we have alternate routes. It's also important in emergency situations, you know, if there's an accident in the road and it's the only, um, path, then it makes it difficult for emergency vehicles and that sort of thing. So, it's, it's particularly an issue on this northwest side of town where there are so, so few, uh, interconnecting streets. So, that'd be my comment, not, not committed to, to the approval or disapproval of this particular development, but very relevant for any, any developments around Philbin on that end of town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others uncommitted to the application?
Arrow Quell, 3636 Jason Avenue. I appreciate the last comments. Just to let, uh, council know, there are road plans and connections, Kinghorn, for instance, there's another development. Development takes care of itself within the city of Pocatello, uh, that way and that. And there is plans, uh, specifically to this one and in other areas where we have interconnectivity. Just takes time because property ownership and that there is already in place. And then the next question, too, there are infiltrators and we've reduced the, the plan there. We've taken about three out with suggestions, uh, if they would talk to staff. And those vaults are grease interceptors, are grid interceptors, and they're about six foot by 10 foot by six foot is what they are. They're 1,500-gallon interceptors that will be there and maybe reduce down to two from five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay, um, Chris, would you like to say anything else?
No, I think Meryl covered on the road plans.
Okay, super. Then with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? Yes?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Seven as outlined in the agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Short Plaid Application Rimrock Properties. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Jeff Butler, represented by Summit Land Surveying, to subdivide 2.79 acres more or less into two commercial lots. The general location of the property is 4339 South Fifth Avenue. The council may wish to approve with conditions as outlined in the staff report. Councilmember, Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the short plaid application for rimrock properties with the conditions outlined in the staff report as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight.
Second. We have a motion by, uh, Council President Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Short Plaid Application Parley's Way. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Stephen Michael, Stephen Michael Barfus, represented by Sean O'Brien of RMEs, requesting to subdivide a two, uh, existing parcels encompassing 1.32 acres more or less into two residential lots. The council may wish to approve with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move for approval of the short plaid application, Parley's Way, with conditions outlined in the staff report as outlined in Agenda Item Nine. Thanks.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Short Plaid Application Snell Swisher. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Daniel Snell. Snell, represented by Michael Jablowski of Kenport Engineering LLC, requesting to subdivide 0.57 acres more or less of land into, of land into one two-family duplex lot and a single-family lot. The council may wish to approve with conditions as outlined in the staff report. Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the short plaid application by Snell Swisher, with the conditions outlined in the staff report as outlined in Agenda Item Number Ten.
Second. We've got a motion by Council President Cheatham and I am going to give it to Nichols. Brett, uh, Councilmember Nichols, I don't know, it was pretty close, so. Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Eleven, Short Plaid Application Fairgrounds Place Subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by McCormick Ranch LLC to subdivide 33.81 acres more or less into three lots. The proposed subdivision is generally located south of Venture Way and west of Fairgrounds Road. The council may wish to approve with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, before we vote on this, um, I made a new friend this last three months while I was in Boise, and he's here today, and he's representing, uh, this subdivision, McCormick Ranch. And this, you know, not to put down these, uh, recommend, these things we've done tonight, but this is 458 housing units. It's a huge subdivision. McCormick Ranch, as I understand, has somewhere around 700 housing units development going on in Pocatello at this time. And I'd like Rod to come up for just a moment, Representative Rod Furnas, and, uh, talk, talk to us about the confidence he has in what's happening in Pocatello.
Representative, welcome.
Rod Furnas, 346 North, 4456 East, Rigby, Idaho. McCormick Ranch, my partner is Brian Ball. Before I tell you why we're here in Pocatello, I'd just like to say that, uh, this last session was one of the best sessions that I've been in. I think this is my fifth session, and it's due to the professionalism of your representatives here today and the expertise that they brought, and you should be proud of what they've, what they've done.
Thank you.
We're here in Pocatello, we, we've done many subdivisions. McCormick Ranch, we developed that here in Pocatello, but we have found, uh, and honestly, when we came to Pocatello, we bought the Holy Spirit ground. And all of you that have been in Pocatello know where the Holy Spirit is. And when, when we bought that ground, the deed actually said we bought the Holy And when, when we bought that ground, the deed actually said we bought the Holy Spirit. I know. I know how much the Holy Spirit costs. And I didn't know that before. But honestly, we've, we've come here, we've developed relationships, we, we were going to just turn that ground and sell it to someone else. As we met with the city, the city engineer, Merrill, the planners, the city, the engineers that work here in Pocatello, down to the title company, honestly, we found a great team of individuals. And as we started to process through the entitlements, we found that Pocatello was, has been the easiest to work with of all the subdivisions that we've done. And that's not to say that they've capitulated on any of the regulations, they've just been good communicators and helped us through all the issues and all the problems and done a fantastic job. And so I'm recommending that Merrill get a double his wage. I know you'll work right on that.
How much can he pay?
Yeah. And I was having withdrawals, I was hoping you'd ask me to speak. But honestly, the city has been incredible and the piece of ground that you're looking at was in Chubbick. It took us a year and a half to de-annex that ground from Chubbick. It's one of the most painful processes that I've ever gone through. And to be, then be turned around and annexed into Pocatello very quickly and to have the right entitlement was a, was really a blessing. I was just adding up the doors, we're actually working on about 800 doors right now and we have 100 acres left to develop after we get those 800 doors in. So we, we intend to stay in Pocatello, we intend to continue to work with, with you all hopefully, and continue to prosper in Pocatello. And it's, and the really best thing about Pocatello, besides the people, is the dirt. When we dig in the dirt, there is no rock. I'm from Rigby, Idaho, a post hole gets about five feet wide when we dig one and because of the rock. And so the dirt here is just incredible. But again, thank you all and we hope to continue to work with you.
Thank you. Representative, you have not dug a hole in our downtown area. Stay up on the benches if you don't want rocks.
But thank you, Mayor. You've been, even down to the building inspector of the mayor, it's been great to work with you and we just appreciate what you've all done.
Thank you. It's nice to have you in our community. Thank you very much. Council President?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the short plaid application for the Fairground Place subdivision with the conditions outlined in the staff report as outlined in Agenda Item Number 11.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Mangum. He beat you pretty solidly. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
No, it was a rig.
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Short Plaid Application Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number 1. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Pocatello Neighborhood Housing Services to subdivide, subdivide 0.12 acres more or less into three condominium lots. The proposed subdivision is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of North Eighth Avenue and East Lander Street. The council may wish to approve the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward, I'm on the board for Neighbor Works, so should I abstain from this?
Council?
Is it a paid position?
It is not.
And are you receiving any fiduciary benefit as part of that position or part of this project?
I am not.
Then I don't see any reason why he would have to abstain from this.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Lurick.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 12, the Short Plaid Application for Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number 1 as outlined.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Short Plaid Application Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number 2. They're building these fast. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Pocatello Neighborhood Housing Services to subdivide 0.12 acres more or less into three condominium lots. The proposed subdivision is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of North Ninth Avenue and East Lander Street. The council may wish to approve with conditions as outlined in the staff report. Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the short plaid application called the Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number 2 with the conditions as outlined in the staff report according to Agenda Item Number 13.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mangum. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda, yes.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, I'd just like to make the comment, in our last work session, we had CDBG before us to give a report, and then we've heard recent, past couple of months from the Housing Alliance as well, who all tell us that one of the greatest needs in Pocatello are housing. And it's just so encouraging to see an agenda that's nearly a dozen items of just short plaid applications for housing units in Pocatello. So I think it's important to highlight that work that's going on, as Rick did a little bit, but just for this entire agenda.
Absolutely. No, thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item 14, Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Funding. Council may wish to approve submission of a, of a pre-awarded grant application and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review to the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant EECBG program. A notice of the, of intent was published by the DOE stating that Pocatello was eligible for $118,810. The EECBG program is designed to assist states, local governments, and tribes in implementing strategies to reduce energy use, the reduce, oh, to reduce fossil fuel emissions and improve energy efficiency.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve, Agenda Item Number 14, the pre-grant application to the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
We discussed this in work session, but there's still, with this application, we still have made no decision how this money is going to be used.
That's correct.
All right.
We, we made the decision on, if you remember right, there was two ways we could apply for this and we made the decision on the grant.
Right. But how that money will be spent.
They even said though that we could swap to voucher down the road if, if needed. They prefer we don't, but that flexibility, even to swap options is available as well.
Yeah.
That's right.
But we did approve grant, but yes, we could change, but not what we're doing exactly.
Not what we're doing, for sure. Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes. Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15 was pulled as mentioned earlier in the agenda, and so with that, we will move to Agenda Item 16. Thank you very much.